You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
We will call the meeting to order on Zoom at 8:01 PM. The RTM will be convened on Wednesday, November 13th, 2024, at 8:00 PM to consider and act upon the following matters. The first is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Representative, I mean, Town Clerk Arpin has our flag, so we'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Representative Toohill, would you call the roll? You're muted, Frank. Your audio is breaking up, Frank.
Representative Adams.
Absent. He's on mute again. On mute, Frank. There you go.
There you go, Frank.
Oh, this is Toohill.
You're muted again.
Representative Adelman.
Representative Adelman is present.
Okay. I just want to call Representative Adams again. Representative Adams?
She's absent.
Okay, thank you, Madam Moderator. Representative Alphon. Representative Alphon. Absent. Representative Amore.
Representative Amore is present.
Representative Anderson.
Representative Anderson's here.
Representative Black. Representative Black.
Representative Black is here.
Representative Bonnenberger.
Representative Bonnenberger is here.
Representative Brooks.
Representative Brooks is here.
Representative Dayhill.
Representative Dayhill is here.
Representative Everson.
Representative Everson is here.
Representative Greenberg. Representative. Representative. I'm sorry?
She is here. She was mute, mute, but she's here.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Representative Bell.
Representative Hartwell is here.
Representative Henshaw.
Representative Henshaw here.
Representative Hines.
Hines is here.
Representative Ingraham. Representative Ingraham. Representative Keith.
Representative Keith is here.
Representative Ingraham's here, but he finally got off mute.
Thank you. Representative Leach.
Representative Leach is here.
Representative Larson.
Representative Larson is here.
Representative LaFredo.
Representative LaFredo is here.
Representative Mareska.
Representative Mareska is here.
Representative McCall.
Representative McCall present.
Representative McCormick.
Representative McCormick is here.
Representative Nuppani. Representative Nuppani. Representative Papalicio.
Representative Nuppani is here.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Nuppani. Representative Papalicio.
Papalicio is here.
Representative Sharkey.
Representative Sharkey is here.
Representative Stresta.
Representative Stresta is here.
Representative Sumro. Representative Sumro.
She is absent. Mr. Toohill, she is absent.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Representative Toohill is here. Representative Verderam.
Representative Verderam is here.
Alicia Water, I'm sorry. Representative Waterman.
Representative Waterman is here.
Okay, so I just want to call those that I think are absent one more time. Representative Adams.
Absent. Absent.
Thank you. Representative Alphon. Absent. Representative Sumro.
Absent.
Okay, so you do have a quorum. We have over 16. I believe we have 27 RTM Representatives present, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Toohill. Would you call for ex officio, please?
The ex officios that I see are the Clerk Lisa Arpin.
Town Clerk Arpin here.
Thank you. Thank you, Town Clerk Arpin. Are there any other ex officio members of the RTM present?
I don't see anybody else.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. We have a quorum. We will proceed. Okay. Item four, we have the minutes of the September 11th and, oh, I'm sorry. That's next. September 11th and October 23rd meetings to approve separately. We will call first for an approval of the September 11th minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the September 11th minutes. This is Representative Verderam.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
That's Representative Everson was the second.
Representative Everson.
Okay. Any comments or discussion, corrections, or additions to the minutes of September 11th? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes are approved, Mr. Toohill. We'll call on the, for approval of the October 23rd minutes. I need a vote. I mean, I need a motion to approve.
So moved, Representative McCormick.
Thank you. And a second for that motion?
Representative Papalicio will second it.
Okay. Representative Papalicio, Frank.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments, additions, or corrections for the minutes of October 23rd? Hearing none, we will vote. All in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes are approved as submitted. Thank you very much. I am not in, nor do I believe the clerk, neither of us have been in receipt of any petitions, reports, or correspondence. So we can move unless there's something going out there that anyone has received. We will move on to item six. Anything that anyone else wants to bring up will come up under new business.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Would we like to insert an item on the agenda at this point?
Yes, we're going to do that right now. We have two contracts to consider. The first is in item six. And that is the Board of Education and the Branford Administrators Organization. The second was a contract by the police. Sorry.
Or the Police Commissioner.
The Board of Police Commissioners. I'm looking at, I want to get it right here. Of the tentative agreement between the Police Union and the Town of Branford. It's the HPSEU/COPS Local Number 459. This agreement was reached after the agenda was published. It was heard in committee, but we have to add it to the agenda to discuss and vote tonight. So do I have a motion for adding consideration of this contract to the agenda as item seven?
This is Representative Henshaw. I'll make that motion.
Okay. Representative Henshaw, Mr. Toohill, makes the motion to add it to the agenda. Okay.
Thank you.
Second for that motion?
I'll second it, Representative Everson.
Okay, we have a second? Any discussions? Questions? All in favor of adding this item to the agenda as new item seven? Say aye.
Aye.
Any? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Now, the item is added as new item seven, and we will, as we go along, move those numbers down to their new designation. Okay, so let's take up item six. To consider and, if appropriate, approve a contract between the Board of Education and the Branford Administrators Organization effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028. This was heard in the Education Committee, so I will turn this over to Representative Keith to present the committee report.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Last week, we met at the Educational Subcommittee, and we heard a presentation by the Chair of the Board of Education, Peter Burdon, as well as the Superintendent of Branford Schools, Dr. Christopher Tranberg. And they presented the contract with the principals. The contract is in the minutes, and I can drop it in the chat as well. The highlights of the contract is that it is contingent and patterned off of previous contracts. It's in line with other contracts. There is $1,000 added to the principal's access to further education. There is a change in language about the possible suspension of raises per performance reviews. And the other significant thing was that came out of the contract. It escapes me now. Excuse me, Madam Moderator. However, like, as I said, I'll drop it into the chat. We had a wonderful meeting, and we unanimously referred this positively to the RTM. And I recommend that we vote in favor of it.
Thank you very much. I will just call attention. There are four highlighted, five highlighted bullets on the memo that you all received from the Education Committee. So I'm sure if you need to refer to that, you may. Okay, so that's in the form of a motion. So I will open the floor to comments, questions, or concerns about the approval of this contract. Any comments? Any questions? Hearing none? We will vote on this recommendation?
Hands up, Marian.
I'm sorry.
Representative Hartwell.
Oh, Representative Hartwell. I didn't, oh, there you are. I'm sorry. If you can put your, the hands up, it will bring everybody. If you raise your hand through the emojis, it will bring you up to the top. I'll be able to better see you. So Representative Anderson, did you have your hand up?
Nope.
No.
I was just pointing.
Okay, thanks. Representative Hartwell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As Representative Hartwell. My major question is what is the economic impact of this new contract over the next three years?
Representative Keith, do you have an answer to that question? Anybody on the Education Committee?
I apologize, Madam Moderator. I was muted. I will be dropping right now the contract into the chat. There it is. I don't have the exact numbers, Representative Hartwell. However, as I said earlier, it's in line with the teachers' contract that we voted on last year. And it voted, again, we voted it out unanimously out of committee.
Representative Brooks.
If you just do some quick math, you figure it's 11 people or 12 people for, you know. I mean, I'd be guessing on the total amount of the administration, but that's something that the Board of Education budget, it would come out of that. So it would be part of their, their lot of money, not the town's, quote unquote, the town's money.
Thank you, Representative Brooks. And I would add to that. The Education Administration was invited to the meeting tonight, but they are meeting right now, the Board of Education, and they're not able to be here. So Representative Hartwell, I will ask that question and get back to you, and I will email the members of the RTM.
Thank you.
Representative Brooks, is your hand still raised? Or are you, are you done?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Representative Ingraham.
Thank you, Representative Ingraham. Generally, we get those numbers in the next meeting or, next meeting or two from the Board of Finance Director on how it affects the budget. Sometimes people have asked for it beforehand so that it could be presented at one of these meetings. But they generally get it when we get the budget transfers to adjust. I know that this one is going to be within the Board of Ed as Representative Brooks had said. So we may not see that unless we ask them.
Thank, are you finished, Representative Ingraham? Yes?
Yes.
I don't want to move on unless, if you're not finished.
No, that's fine. I'm totally here.
Okay. Representative Hartwell, thank you. Representative Hartwell.
Thank you. It's just a general statement was that, in my mind, when we get presented with something which is going to have future economic impact, and I understand that these things are subject to lots of calculations and, you know, uncertainties. But I think we should be given a ballpark number that says it's a three-year contract for this number of people. And as things stand today with a 2.5% increase, this is what we're looking at on an annual basis. I don't think we should be waiting a month or two after we approve the contract. And I'm going to vote for this contract. This is not about this particular contract. It's about how we get this kind of information put in front of us so that when we do come to make a decision, it's more fully informed. So that's, that's my point. And I'm going to ask the same question when we come to the police contract today, if you will. What's the overall impact that we can see? Not just looking back in this particular case with the police, but also going forward. Because I think that that is a fundamental piece of information that we, as an RTM and the town, should have as we're making these kinds of decisions.
Thank you very much. Are you done with your statement right now? Yes?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll move on to Representative Black.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just, just looking at the contract, and I think the highest increase is about $10,000 over the, for one individual. So I think that, you know, very roughly, the cost of the contract is probably about $200,000 over the life of the contract in terms of increases. There's increases in health care contributions that offset some of the salary increases. But, you know, if you wanted a ballpark, I was waiting for Representative Brooks, our resident math expert, to give. Expert. But, you know, that's what I think. As Representative Brooks was saying, it's not a lot of individuals. So, you know, while the salaries are large, the, because there aren't a whole lot of people there, it's just not that much money in terms of the education budget. And so, you know, again, this was negotiated by the Board of Ed. Our choice is to ask the Board of Ed to go back and go to mediation and arbitration with the union when they've already come to us and said, we think this is a good idea, a good contract. So, you know, particularly with these contracts, it really doesn't make sense to do anything but approve it. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Representative Black.
Excuse me, but I never suggested that we should send this back for arbitration. I simply said, please, give us an overall number, which you've done, Mr. Black, and that's great. But we shouldn't have to, have to do these calculations ourselves. They should know what they're doing. They should give us the information. It's, I think it's a simple request. But certainly, no one has suggested that we should send this back to arbitration. That's, I'm sorry. It's not what anyone said.
Thank you both. Your hand up again, Representative Black? And I have another.
No, no, sorry.
No? Okay. Representative Keith, where's your hand up? No? Okay.
No, Madam Moderator.
Okay. I thought I saw a gesture. Sorry. Okay. Any other comments or questions? One more time. Any other comments or questions from people not on the RTM? If you're here? Okay. Hearing none? Let's have a vote on this matter. All in favor of approval of the, let me get the wording right. Contract between the Branford Board of Education and the Branford Administrators Organization effective July 1 through June 30, 2025 through June 30, 2028.
Roll call vote?
This is going to be, yes, thank you. This is going to be a roll call vote just because we're on Zoom. So Representative Toohill, when you vote, again, one, please say your name and your vote.
Okay. Our Clerk.
Frank, you're breaking up.
Representative.
I think that was Representative Adelman. And if it was, Representative Adelman votes in favor and yes.
Representative Anderson.
Anderson votes yes.
Representative Black.
Representative Black votes yes.
Representative Bonnenberger.
Representative Bonnenberger votes yes.
Representative Brooks.
Representative Brooks votes yes.
Representative Dayhill.
Representative Dayhill votes yes.
Representative Everson.
Representative Everson votes yes.
Representative Greenberg.
Representative Greenberg, yes.
Representative Hartwell.
Representative Hartwell votes yes.
Representative Henshaw.
Representative Henshaw, yes.
Representative Hines.
Representative Hines votes yes.
Representative Ingraham.
Representative Ingraham votes yes.
Representative Keith.
Representative Keith votes aye.
Representative Leach.
Representative Leach votes yes.
Representative Larson.
Representative Larson votes yes.
Representative LaFredo.
Mr. LaFredo, are you here?
No.
No? Okay.
I plead, work. Work. It sounds perfect.
Frank, you're breaking up again. Sorry.
Okay. Representative.
Representative Toohill, if you take your picture off, that may help the audio.
Okay.
Stop your video. Mr. Toohill, if you don't mind, I can call the names. And if you would do the recording, that might make it a little simpler.
Okay.
Okay? Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. Which is the last vote you recorded?
Okay. So at this point, we could call the vote of Representative.
Mareska, you recorded Representative Mareska's vote? Okay, thank you. Representative.
No. No.
No, he didn't. He didn't.
He did not. Okay. Let's go. Representative Leach voted. Did Representative Larson vote?
Yes.
Okay. Representative LaFredo is not here. Representative Mareska.
Representative Mareska votes yes.
Representative McCall?
Representative McCall votes yes.
Representative McCormick?
Representative McCormick votes yes.
Representative Nuppani?
Representative Nuppani voted yes.
Okay. Representative Papalicio? Mr. Papalicio? You're mute.
Vote yes.
Okay. Representative Sharkey?
Representative Sharkey votes yes.
Thank you. Representative Schresspa?
Representative Schresspa votes yes.
Representative Toohill?
Representative Toohill votes yes.
Representative Verderam?
Representative Verderam votes yes.
Representative Waterman?
Representative Waterman votes yes.
Okay. Mr. Toohill, is that a unanimous vote?
That's correct. Yes. The vote was 26 to nothing, Madam Moderator.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, now we will move on to new item seven to consider and, if appropriate, approve a contract between, let me get it right. Um. The Police Union, USP, UPSU/COPS Local 459 and the Town of Branford. Representative Bonnenberger, Public Services, heard this in committee. Would you give the committee report?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes, Public Services Committee met via Zoom on Monday, November 11th, to evaluate and discuss the tentative agreement between the Town of Branford and UPSU/COPS Local Number 459 effective from July 2022 to June 2027. We had a thorough briefing from Margaret Liberta, Branford's Director of Human Resources, and Chief Mulhern and Deputy Chief Alves of the Police Department on the details of the agreement. The contract makes us more competitive with other towns in the state. We will be able to attract and retain more police officers. We are, the police officers will also be, there's going to be some adjustments to the patrol schedule. They're going from a 5-2, 5-2 schedule to a 5-2, 5-3 schedule. They've made some adjustments to how comp time and overtime are calculated. All essentially things that are making it, making policing better and more effective in the town. There have also been some changes to, I guess we're moving to the Connecticut Partnership Plan. So the town will be moving away from self-insuring for health care, which has resulted in a grievance being dropped. So overall, good. Everybody's pleased with the result as far as I understood it from the briefing. The committee voted unanimously, 5-0, to approve the contract. And I put that in the form of a motion to approve the agreement and contract. Pending questions.
Thank you very much. I see Representative Everson's hand raised. Representative Everson.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just wanted to note that Chief Mulhern and Deputy Chief Alves are on this meeting. So if anyone in particular has questions for them, I think it's important that we do vote in favor of this contract. Our officers, police officer force, they have waited a while for this. So it goes back to 2022. So I will be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Everson. I'd also like to note that HR Director Liberta is with us as well tonight. Do I hear, have any other questions or hands raised? Doctor, Representative Keith?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I too will be voting in favor of this contract. I would just like to ask a question, kind of an invitation, if the chief would like to speak about how
if the chief would like to speak about how things are going with the renovations.
So, this is Deputy Chief Alves, I will take that question as I've been project lead on the building renovation. Right now, all bids are in for all trades, and we're doing scope reviews with the construction manager on the project, so all the companies that have bid on the project are reviewing the scope of work with the construction manager to make sure that they can do the work that they bid for within the project. So, we hope to have a guaranteed maximum price to present to the Public Building Commission at the end of this month, and I don't know what that number is yet. However, that's where the project is, so pending an approval by the Public Building Commission, we should be able to move forward with a notice to proceed to the contractors and get some dates on the schedule for the move. So, we're looking at the end of December at this point, although that may push into early January as well. So, all is well with the project, and it's been a lot of work. But it's, it's been, it's on its, on its way, we're very close to proceeding.
And just to clarify, Deputy Chief, is it, it's, is it, it's my understanding that the youth officer is now being housed at the high school, is that correct?
He's working out of, well, in conjunction with the high school in a, a more formalized position as a school resource officer. He's spending a lot of time at the high school, but yes, he's back and forth between the PD and, and actually all schools, really.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Representative Hartwell?
Uh, thank you, Madam Moderator. As I mentioned in the last conversation around contracts, the question is, because there's the amount of back pay that's required here because this contract is dated from two years ago and is going forward in the future. So, how much is this going to cost for back pay and where's that money coming from? And then what is the projected overall increase that would be associated with this in future budgets?
Moderator, would you like me to address that question?
I would, if you would like to, I, we would love you to, sure. Representative, I mean, Director Liberta.
Thank you. Of course, there was no budget made this year for any of the increases associated with this, with this agreement because it was not made. So the monies will be coming from, or be, will be requested from contingency retroactive to the July 1st, 2022 year. The total projected, including overtime for those two years, 22, 23, and 23, 24, the total request will be three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. We have, we have not done the projections for this year, 24, 25, because of course we can't really include the overtime or the base pay projections yet until we get a final payroll date to bring those to the officers. But one would project an additional amount of that, about the same, about three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand for this year. Thank you.
I'm sorry, this is Representative Hartwell again. So, two years' worth of back pay with overtime was three hundred and, what'd you say, seventy-eight thousand?
No, three thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Fifty-eight.
Four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents.
All right, so three fifty-eight for the, for those two years. And then if we are throwing in a third year, I would assume it would be half of that number added on, rather than?
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
The July 1st, as per the contract, per the agreement, the TA, the July 1st, 2024, 25 year, the percentage increase, total increase goes up by five point two five percent.
Uh-huh, okay. For the, for the two years past is three fifty-eight, and then you're expecting for the current year they were in, which is unbudgeted, another three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Again, that's, those are projected, I mean, I haven't done them.
Just asking for ballpark numbers as I did the other night, and, and that gives us some indication of what is it going to cost. And I intend to vote for this contract. I want to make our police force as competitive as possible. We obviously need a good, strong, active, you know, police force, so that's, that's not the issue. The question is, in general, when coming forward with a contract like this, where those numbers should be presented as part of the initial discussion. So, thank you very much. That's very, those numbers are helpful.
Representative Brooks, you have a question?
This is Representative Brooks. I don't have a question, I have a comment. You know, we talk about approving this contract to make us competitive. And I, and I'm, that, that's not something I'm interested in being, I'm interested in being better, I'm interested in being great, and I think as a community, we should start thinking about not, along the lines of not just being competitive, but being better, being ahead. You know, we as a community can afford it. I demand from the people that work for me, I demand excellence and I reward their excellence. And I, I don't, I, I think, I mean, I've never heard otherwise, that our police force is excellent, so we should reward them with excellence, not just competitiveness. If it was appropriate, I would pass an amendment to add point two five percent to these years, but I know that's not appropriate, so I'm not going to do it. But I just ask that, moving forward, we start thinking about, as a community, thinking about being above the curve, not in the middle of the curve. That's my two cents, and thank you for letting me have it.
Thank you, Representative Brooks. Representative Keith?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I, I would echo what the last two representatives have spoken. I too am going to be voting in favor of this contract. I'm excited to support our police, just as I'm excited to support our firemen, our teachers, our principals. But my concern is, similar to what Representative Hartwell said, is the issue of transparency in terms of communication and how we're going to, how we're receiving as the RTM the information and when we receive it. And Director, I was wondering, you did answer the question in terms of the fiscal impact regarding the police contract. I, I would just like to go back to Representative Hartwell's comment or question earlier. Could you, could you equally describe the impact economically and financially regarding the, the principal's contract? Thank you.
I, this is Margaret Liberta, Director of HR for the town of Branford. I am not, I, I don't have access to that information. And I think that would probably be addressed better with the superintendent of the school since it's a separate budget.
Thank you.
Representative Brooks, your hand is still raised on your, with the emoji, are you, do you have another comment?
This is Representative Brooks apologizing because I'm terrible with technology.
Okay, well, just a, a point of, of information on Zoom meetings, if you do raise your hand with the emoji, which you do under the reactions button, what it does is it raises you to the top of the screen in the order that you raised your hand. So it makes it easier for me to get you called on in the proper order, okay? So, just a point of information on Zoom. Okay, are there other comments or questions to be raised regarding the motion to approve this contract? Going once, going twice, any members of the public? Okay, then the motion is to approve the contract as submitted. Again, this will be a voice, a roll call vote, and we'll give Representative Toohill another chance at a static free roll call. And if that doesn't work, Mr. Toohill, I'll, we'll do what we did before, okay? All right. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is RTM Clerk Toohill. Representative Adelman?
Representative Adelman votes enthusiastically, yes.
Representative Anderson?
Representative Anderson votes yes.
Representative Black?
Representative Black votes yes.
Representative Bonnenberger?
Representative Bonnenberger votes yes.
Representative Brooks?
Representative Brooks votes yes.
Representative Dayhill?
Representative Dayhill votes yes.
Representative Everson?
Representative Everson votes yes.
Representative Greenberg?
Representative Greenberg, yes.
Representative Hartwell?
Representative Hartwell votes yes.
Representative Henshaw?
Representative Henshaw votes yes.
Representative Hines?
Representative Hines votes yes.
Representative Ingraham?
Representative Ingraham votes yes.
Representative Keith?
Representative Keith votes yes.
Representative Leach?
Representative Leach votes yes.
Representative Larson?
Representative Larson votes yes.
Representative Mareska?
Representative Mareska votes yes.
Representative McCall?
Representative McCall votes yes.
Representative McCormick?
Representative McCormick votes yes.
Representative Nupani?
Representative Nupani votes yes.
Representative Papalizio?
Representative Papalizio votes yes.
Representative Sharkey?
Representative Sharkey votes yes.
Representative Shrespa?
Representative Shrespa votes yes.
Representative Toohill votes yes. Representative Verderam?
Representative Verderam votes yes.
Representative Waterman?
Representative Waterman votes yes.
It's a unanimous vote, Madam Moderator, passes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Toohill, we have a contract. Okay, let's move on to a new item eight. To consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance protecting licensed home daycare providers from restrictive HOA, HOA bylaws. Representative Henshaw, this was in your bailiwick, where are we on this matter?
Madam Moderator, this is Representative Henshaw. The Rules and Ordnance Committee had previously met on October 15th and asked to voted to re-refer this item, and in the subsequent RTM meeting, the item was re-referred. We have not had a Rules and Ordnance Committee meeting since, so I would ask again that the RTM re-refer this item, and I put that in the form of a motion.
I think we needed an actual motion since there wasn't a committee meeting. So do we have a motion to re-refer this item?
Then I'll make that.
Representative Black? Representative Black, are you making that motion?
No, I have a question really for Representative Henshaw. I thought we'd gotten an opinion from the town attorney that this, an ordinance would be superfluous, so that we take no action. I, I think I missed the committee.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, yeah, just, just to clarify, yes, in a previous RNO meeting, we had already received a memo from Attorney Anaskovich, which we relayed in the meeting, relayed to the, the person that had originally proposed that we look at this. Their feeling was that they had had information from their attorneys, which was slightly different, and they wanted the opportunity to double-check with them. So in that, in our last committee meeting, rather than take no action, we decided that we would leave it open as a re-referral, just in case they wanted to come back with further information. So, that's, that's what we did in that meeting of October 15th. We voted not, not to take no action, but to re-refer. I do anticipate in the upcoming meeting next week of Rules and Ordnance that we will probably put this, this to bed, because my understanding is that they have, they have concluded that, that Attorney Anaskovich was correct, but we'll, we'll see or we'll validate that in next week's meeting.
Thank you.
So Representative Henshaw, you did have a subsequent meeting to, to October 11th, is that right? October, whenever it was?
No.
Twenty-third, no, you did not.
October 15th was our last meeting, and our RTM meeting was after that, so.
Okay, so we need a motion, we do need a motion to re-refer?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make the motion that we refer, we refer that.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Moderator, this is Representative Black, I'll second that motion.
You'll second, okay. Thank you, that's seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? The matter's re-referred, thank you. Okay, new item nine. To consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance to establish a harbor management commission pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 22A-113K. Representative Henshaw, this is yours?
Madam Moderator, again, this is Representative Henshaw. And as with the previous item, we, in our meeting of October 15th, Rules and Ordnance wanted to carry this forward with a re-referral after some discussion, and in the last RTM meeting, we agreed to re-refer that, but I would ask that we move that forward, and I'll make a motion that we re-refer this item.
Okay, so we have a second. Who, who was that?
Representative Adelman.
Representative Adelman, Mr. Toohill, Representative Adelman, second.
Yep, thank you.
Any discussions or questions? Okay, all in favor of refer, re-referring new item nine to the next meeting, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? No? Okay, the item is re-referred. And new item 10, to consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance which will encode reasonable restrictions on short-term rentals in Branford. And Mr. Henshaw?
Again, Madam Moderator, this is Representative Henshaw, and as with the previous two items, Rules and Ordnance had met on October 15th, and after discussion, had made a motion or made an agreement unanimously to re-refer this, and in the subsequent RTM meeting, the, the RTM re-referred it. We have had no intervening meetings, so I would ask again and make a motion that we re-refer this. But I would like, before we do that, just to say that the, in case people are going to be listening in on this, on BCTV, that the next meeting this coming week of Rules and Ordnance will be focused on this particular ordinance, and we will have not only a more detailed analysis of the five-hundred-person survey that we received the results of, but in addition, we will have some discussion of some, some possible framework for creating an ordinance. But again, I would ask that the RTM re-refer this item.
Okay, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, I need a second for Representative Henshaw's motion to re-refer.
Representative Papalizio will second it.
Okay, thank you, Representative Papalizio seconds. Hey, any questions, comments on this re-referral? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor of re-referring this item, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the matter is re-referred. Item 11, new item 11, any other business to come before the RTM? Is, is there any new business lurking in the gallery?
Madam Moderator?
Who is that?
I, it, it's Clerk Toohill.
Oh, hi, yes, Mr. Toohill.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would request a moment of silence, please, in remembrance and honor of recently departed Peter Banca. Peter of Stony Peter of Stony Creek was a fellow colleague of ours on the Branford RTM. He also served the town on the Board of Assessment Appeals. Then in twenty thirteen, when First Selectman Cosgrove established the town's permanent building committee. Peter served as its first and only chairman ever since. And he continued chairing the permanent building committee until he recently passed in twenty twenty-four. So I would request a moment of silence in honor of Peter Banca, a great Branford citizen.
Thank you very much. We will have a moment of silence for Peter Banca. Thank you. I see two hands raised, Representative Brooks? New business?
While we're, this is Representative Brooks. Um, while we're on the subject of, uh, union contracts and raises and, and things, I, I, I would just like to, again. Moving forward, uh, as a community, we start to think about, uh, being better and, uh. Attracting, uh, the best. And we all know, one of the ways to do that is through pay and that as these contracts are negotiated. That we keep that in the forefront of our minds, not just what's beneficial. Uh, for the town from a, a money standpoint, but what's beneficial for the town from a, uh. A, a, a standpoint of attracting the best of the best, so. Uh, I would love to see as a community, we have that philosophy moving forward, thank you for the time.
Welcome. Representative Keith?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, um, somewhat similar to what Representative Brooks just said. Uh, we are the best town in New Haven County and we voted on a principal's contract tonight. We voted on a, a police contract tonight, we have previously voted on teachers' contracts, parish contracts, uh, municipal contracts, uh. My, my question, my push, and I guess my recommendation, Madam Moderator, i- i- in the form of a. Of a motion, I, I, I would like to refer, uh, to, uh, the Rules and Ordinance. Commission, committee, sorry, uh, is it possible that we can get a better understanding of the timeline? Of when contracts are shared with the RTM and the committees, thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Um, we will take that up, uh, perhaps and, and see where it's the best, uh. Who has the best set of information, which committee might be, uh, best able to work with that and maybe with Director Liberta. Um, I'm not sure if it's Rules and Ordinance's, but we will, um, we will try to find the right place to answer that question.
Um, uh, excuse me.
Wait, Representative Toohill, um, oh, were you going to answer this, Mr. Keith's question, Dr. Keith's question?
Well, um, to be.
Uh, you're breaking up again, Frank.
What's the quest, please? What's the?
What's the timeline for, um, uh, contract renewals, go, you know, with all the various contracts in town, I believe. Is to have a, a, a timeframe, an outline of the timeframe, do I get that right, Mr. Keith?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Representative McCormick?
Uh, point of wonder, Madam Moderator, I believe, uh, Representative Keith made a motion. So if he did put that in form of a motion, then we need to get a second and if.
Okay.
If, if anyone wants a second and then it would be referred at that point.
Um, Representative Keith, would you be willing to withdraw your motion and submit it as correspondence till we find out where it's best for it to go?
Absolutely, Madam Moderator.
Okay, uh, then would you withdraw your motion?
Uh, Madam Moderator, I withdraw my motion.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Representative McCormick. Okay.
You're welcome.
So other new business? Going once, going twice, going three times, okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Representative.
Representative who?
Papalizio says let's adjourn.
Very good, do I have a second? Representative Leach seconds. Okay, all in favor?
Third.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
The meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-six PM, good night, everybody, have a great.
Good night, everyone.